Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the third Budget Work Session. And today is January 30th, 2025. Before we begin, I want to welcome all the board members and have them introduce themselves. I'm going to start from my left-hand side.
Good morning. Prenios Sivarnat, student member of the Board.
Good morning. Natalie Zimmerman, representing District Two.
Buenos dias. Good morning. Carla Silvestre, School Board Member at Large.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Grace Rivera Oving, representing District One.
Good morning. Brenda Wolf, District Five.
Good morning. Rita Montoya, Board Member at Large.
Good morning. Laura Stewart, District Four.
And good morning, everyone. Julie Yang, District Three, President of the Board. All right. So, thank you. I actually want to give a recap. We were at Payne Branch High School on Tuesday night for a community information session. I want to thank all the staff who attended and also thank all the participants there. We have a really good Dr. Taylor conversation with parents and students. There were a number of students show up. They have wonderful feedback for us. So it demonstrates, again, creating a budget is more than just crunching numbers. It's about investing in the future and strengthening our programs. This process reflects our values and the hard work and the dedication of this Board, the administration, and all the staff in our system. Today's work session topic are going to be on changes to the base budget and system reorganization. Staff should point out pertinent issues that may concern the Board. As always, Board members are free to ask questions at any point due to the large quantity of information. I would like Board members to focus on questions that will help you make decisions for this budget. All right. And we have one more community information session, virtual session, this evening at The information is on the Board website. The Board is scheduled to take tentative action on the proposed operating budget at its business meeting on Tuesday, February the 4th. All right, Dr. Taylor? Let's proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to take a few moments to go through some information, and then we'll entertain some of the Board's questions. We have a number of follow-up items as well, so we'll ask for the presentation to be pulled up on our screens. There we go. Just as a recap, we've marched through our budget documents in detail with the Board at your last two work sessions, reviewing revenue, going over the blueprint, talking about our expenditures that keep the lights on, updating our conversation about revenue, which is an ever-evolving conversation, talking about our discretionary expenditures, and we even began the conversation of following up on some of the questions that the Board has, and we'll do more of that today. We've got the last section of our budget to review, which is our system restructure and changes that we're making to the base budget, and also some follow-up items that we want to talk about today. We also have some contract information. It didn't make it into the slide deck because it was late to be finished, but we're going to add that on to Board Docs. It was a comparison that the Board had requested, and we'll make reference to that later in the presentation as well, and highlight that request as well. So, to jump right in, as Ms. Yang alluded to in her opening remarks, this is a perfect time for us to pause and to set the stage for today's conversation, but to also review the landscape that our families are experiencing and to think about what MCPS and the Board of Education believes and what's important to us. The budget is a great opportunity to communicate our values. It's a great opportunity to communicate our priorities. Many people will look at our budget to find our priorities and to find our values. And never is there more a pressing time than right now to be crystal clear about the things that are important to us. We know that our families are looking at the news, some with some concern, some with some confusion, and when we can be a source of clarity and a source of support, we are really working at our best. And it is an opportunity for us to remind our community of our intentions and our actions to be a school system that strives to be safe for all students when they walk through the front door, all of our students, our staff, our guests, when they come to our campuses and when they engage with us, even in a virtual space, that we be welcoming, inclusive, and a safe environment. This is critically important, and we hope that this is part of our message that comes through in our budget process, even in times where it's difficult and it's challenging. So with that, knowing our values of prioritizing learning, respect, relationships, equity, and excellence, that these should be things that are present in the things that we think, the things that we say, and the things that we do. And so with that, it's a perfect time to talk about your priorities and how those things are reflected here as well, and how this also reflects in an expanded way some additional values that the Board has, things like fiscal stewardship and transparency and making sure that we are attentive to the areas that matter most. And so that really sets the stage for our conversation today in terms of making a shift in our organization to focus more on what's happening in the classroom, to get back to the fundamentals of what teaching and learning should look like, to do it in a really responsive way and a responsible way with clarity and transparency. So, in truth, reorganization was probably the wrong word to stick in this budget document. In fact, it's probably not a fair representation of what we are trying to accomplish in the next moves that we need to make as a school system. Reorganization usually involves moving things around, oftentimes superficially. I'm not a particular fan of reorganizations. I actually am much more in favor of working with the team that we have to create a different set of expectations and living up to that, but we have some structural issues that we need to address to serve schools better. And so really, our efforts are about how we can restructure to create a central services model versus a central office or a central hub model. This is a very different look. And so today, I bring you fish. And since this would probably not be welcome, according to Ms. Webb, in the boardroom to bring in fish that will undoubtedly leave a smell, we opted for something a little bit more friendly and way more friendly than broccoli. We opted for Swedish fish. And so the Board all have a packet of Swedish fish. In inspecting the ingredients in the Swedish fish, this is not something that we would serve in our school cafeterias or even really allow in our schools. I think the Red Dy 40 is particularly offensive to a number of folks, but if you're a big fan of Swedish fish, like Ms. Wolf and I are, this is our favorite candy. We share that in common. This is a good metaphor for a lot of our transition because we're a learning organization. And when we do things for people, we sometimes miss the objective of what we're trying to do. And oftentimes, we've been put in a position where we have provided fish for people instead of teaching them how to fish. So I've also brought for you what we believe to be one of the world's smallest fishing rods as an example of the transition that we are really trying to get at with our central services restructuring. Now, I want to give a lot of credit to our central services team because there's no shortage of hard work within this team. Spread across the district in several different buildings, providing a whole host of services, everything from logistical services to welcoming people into this community and getting them set up in a new school environment, to providing curriculum resources, payroll, and human resources services, as well as leadership support. It's a pretty deep and vast commitment to support. One of the downsides is that we've gotten ourselves into a place where we run to the rescue to solve a lot of problems as a knee-jerk reaction to some of our challenges because it matches with adult convenience and not necessarily what our needs are. And in our application of rushing to solve problems, we kind of missed the boat of how do we grow as an organization and how do we model learning and how do we create that pervasive learning model throughout the district that mirrors our values? So, a lot of our changes that we need to make as an organization are about how we serve schools better, but also how we might serve schools differently, modeling the behaviors that we expect from them. So even though this is a restructuring of central services, it's really more like a reculturing of central services in terms of what we need to do and how we can measure our success. One way that we can measure our success is through the lens of our customers, our students, our educators, our parents, our principals, when they contact central office and the type of support that they get, how much time they have to wait until they get a response or until they get support and guidance, how many layers they have to go through to get those responses. There are ways that we can measure our performance better, and some of that even starts with measuring it in the first place because we haven't been. And there are opportunities for us to operate a little bit more efficiently and to clarify what our objectives are so that we're all rowing in the same direction. The biggest strategy that's tied to this is the reassignment and realignment of our staff into 13 cross-functional teams. These 13 teams will be on a cluster-based model where they will provide subject matter expertise in a few defined areas. We'd love to grow this over time, but the reality is, is we want to start off strong and focus our energy on the things that matter most and to marshal our resources in a very concrete and very direct way. We have pockets of excellence everywhere. People are doing great work. The challenge that we run into is that sometimes we step on each other's toes. The right hand does not know what the left hand is doing all of the time, and that challenge leads to a lot of inefficiency and a lot of turf wars and even combat amongst departments for the attention of our educators and our staff when we are competing for professional learning objectives and priorities. That's got to stop. This is a team approach. The only way that we're going to be able to serve our schools and our students better is if we start acting and working together as a team. Dividing our county up into clusters, if you would have told me that this was a great strategy eight months ago, I'm not sure that I would have endorsed that. I have seen it firsthand, the wisdom in the cluster model and the approach to serving families in a K-12 space and following those families from one school to the next as they matriculate. There is really great wisdom in that. And our clusters have developed identities unto their own, and those identities have unique needs, and we can honor that approach in a really direct and really interdisciplinary way, and that's really what our target is. So what does a cross-functional team look like? It looks like both instructional and non-instructional supports. If we really want to make restorative justice a priority, which very clearly, from many folks who have come to testify at our public hearings, it is, then we need to have a game plan and a strategy on how to make this permeate throughout the entire district versus an add-on request optional in approach. Now, there's a policy side to handle that, and there's a practical side to handle that. The practical side looks an awful lot like this, where we have specialists who can guide the professional learning of our teams in a really specific and concrete way. Same goes for special education services, making sure that a student who matriculates from one school to the next and to the next has that continuity and that people are connecting the dots for that child's experience in a really meaningful way. Literacy, mathematics, these are critical focus areas that we need to improve and that we need to support. How about staffing? Staffing is so critically important, but what we have determined and what we figured out is that different parts of our county have different staffing needs, and there are different priorities in different parts of the county. And having some singular contact that you can have that is yours makes the world a difference into whether or not you fill a vacancy or that vacancy stays open for several months. We can do more, and we can marshal our resources a little bit tighter and a little bit better in that context. Some other changes that we brought into our central services is we went through our very first zero-budgeting exercise in many, many years. We'll do this again next year. This is not an easy exercise, and it's not something you can do as a one-off and expect to get great results. There was nearly, actually, a little over a half a million dollars in office savings that were identified in going through this zero-based budgeting exercise of just our offices determining what it was, in fact, essential. And in many areas, this won't surprise you, we determined that there wasn't enough budgeted in some areas, and that's perfectly natural, too. That's actually credible. That's actually credible, that there are areas that you need to reduce and areas that you need to expand. That is normal. Doing a contract review is something that this board has indicated that they're passionate about. This needs to be an ongoing exercise as well. From my perspective, I found this to be most illuminating to see where we are contracting services, what we are contracting services for. And perhaps my favorite question of all time in relation to contracts came from Ms. Silvestri when she said, "When do we decide to stop working with someone?" Well, that's a great question. And so defining those parameters and really being concrete about that will lead to a better process and a more transparent process so that this is not something that's just up in the air. And so we're delighted that that's going to be a document that gets attached to Board Docs and we can share with the public to compare the fiscal '25 contracts to the fiscal '26 contracts so you can see the difference. Absolutely critical. We realized pretty early on in this process with nearly 3,000 employees that are assigned to central office that we need to review this over a two-year period. I'm not particularly excited about this. I'm not particularly thrilled about having to do this over a two-year period. I think that that's perhaps even unnecessarily messy. But to do this well requires a lot of deliberate intention and working with our association partners and going through process steps. There's some fair criticism from our MACAP partners at some of the budget testimony that you've received that there may have been some process steps that weren't followed to a T, and they need to be followed to a T. And so pausing some of this work to follow those processes is critically important, and we see that as being a necessary step. The best outcome of this and something that we're enormously proud of is something that has also come routinely from our MACAP partners, which is how do we balance the workload and responsibilities of people and making sure that we're not overloading people because the quote-unquote "work" has to go somewhere? Well, truth be told, we also need to decide what work we will focus on and what work we will let go of. That in this model of delivering fish versus teaching people to fish, we need to evaluate what precisely our service model is and how we are deploying our resources to be most effective. Many of the things that we engage in don't yield a high return on investment because we are in the fish-delivery business versus working with people to teach them to solve their own problems with some support and guidance, which is really what our model needs to be like. So we do have some things that we need to get done over the next several months. We are about six weeks ahead in the timeline that I shared with the board earlier. We thought that there was some urgency to get this done ahead of time, particularly in the budget cycle, for a reason that might surprise you. We very much wanted for people to have a very long runway to know if we were going to make some changes, to be able to have voice to complain about those changes because this is their life and livelihood. We feel very confident that there's more than enough work to do in MCPS that our very talented staff can stay with us if they want to stay with us, although it may not be in the role that they are perfectly in favor of at the moment. But we have more than enough things for folks to do around here that we will go through the process of landing people with intention, with care and with support and with a lot of compassion and empathy. But we do have steps to go through in this restructuring. And we are in the process of hiring, and we'll do this along with our school hiring. And there are some steps. In addition to placements for involuntary transferred and surplus employees, that we will go through layers of placement and hiring that we'll all bring back to the board for approval and endorsement along these benchmarks. These are our target dates and really will help us get settled as we go into the new fiscal year. I do have a couple of follow-up items that I'll address, and then I'll pass it off to the experts to my left and your right. The first item is something that has been brought up at the last two work sessions, and Mrs. Wolf guaranteed that she would bring it up at every work session in perpetuity until doggone it I answered her question. And her question was, "Where are the Black students in this budget?" And this is a really important and fair question, and I want our community to know, and this is really everybody in our community, that this is a population that has, on the average, not performed the way that we want. And we have a lot of student populations that are not performing the way that we want. The fact that nearly half of all of our students are not meeting literacy proficiency is really troubling. But when it's disproportionately affecting group of students, our Latino students or our Black students, we have to hone in, and we have to look at our student populations through a special lens. One might even say that our Black students are a special population that deserves special attention because the issues are so dramatic, and that's definitely the case. It's also important to point out that our Black students are not monolithic. None of our students are. There are pockets of success in some areas that we can be very proud of and pockets where there are significant lack of success. And those deserve our attention in a really surgical and really intentional way. And a lot of what we have to do in this room deals with the 30,000-foot view. And so it's a little hard to drill down to a specific setting or a specific school or a specific school improvement plan to address a specific population of students and how they're performing, but maybe that's how this work needs to evolve. And maybe that needs to be a turn that we make as a governance team. And as we look to the future, how committees of this board and how our team can approach this work to speak with more specificity of how we're addressing the needs of student populations, and in this case, our Black students. There are specific examples that we know that will enhance the learning experience of our young people, a couple that I want to draw attention to. The first one is any program enhancements that we do to CREA. We really do want to expand this program to be accessible to more than just our EML population. We see great utility in a number of students who are just running out of time for high school and who want to contribute positively to their communities, need an industry credential, want to get on that path to a GED, want to have access to classes that they can complete in a setting that is not their school setting. This will have an impact on our community. It will have a positive impact. The things that we do for special education services, the efforts that we make not only impact special education classrooms and the special education environment, but they also impact the general education environment. They also improve our administration's ability to address concerns across a wide range of things when they're not having to put out a fire in a specific area because of understaffing. These things are all interconnected. No, they don't directly or specifically speak to one student population or another, but they are connected and they will have a direct influence. And I think that that does make a difference. Equally impactful, maybe even more impactful, are the policy decisions that we make and the direction that we set in our strategic plan and the commitments that we make in terms of policy shifts. How we restructure our code of conduct to make restorative justice a part of everyday life in every school, critically important. How we make culturally responsive teaching a part of Tier 1 instruction, not just a Tier 2 or Tier 3 approach, critically important. Those things are baked into our base budget. They're not reflected in the change sheet in Table 1A, but they are impactful. They will make a significant difference. And this board needs to hold us accountable for the follow-through to see that performance reflects these investments of both time and financial resources. To highlight this a little bit further, because I think it is important to show a concrete example, that schools that have a larger population of Black students or Latino students or student du jour, pick your student group, that you be able to see concretely in an example of how your school is impacted by a budget decision. This is a great example. And at the top of our list on our Table 1A, there is an exhibit that's attached to Line 59, our differentiated school site allocation equity add-on. And to see firsthand how your school either was advantaged or disadvantaged by our fiscal '25 allocation and what we're proposing that it should look like in fiscal '26. We are hoping that you see a noticeable difference because we see the need for the materials and supplies line at schools to be offset because we know that there are differences in communities in terms of the support that the outside can provide to our schools and what our principals are able to do. Ms. Silvestri is right. We need to create guidelines and expectations. We need to communicate those broadly. We need to report back to the board how those things are being created. We need to utilize our equity team in drafting those guidelines so that those guidelines actually reflect our intention of moving the needle for specific populations of students, in this case, Black students. So with that, this is something that we are proud of, that reflects our values, that communicates, hopefully clearly, although tangentially, our intention to improve our academic and other performance metrics for our students, and in this case, to Ms. Wolf's point, our Black students. I want to pause here for just a quick second on this next item because we're going to go through this list pretty quickly to get to board feedback and questions. We put this slide deck together before we finished the contracts information, but we now know that the contracts information, it's up on Board Docs?
Not quite.
Not quite yet, but we're going to add it to Board Docs today so that everybody can have it and so that the board can see a copy. This is reflective of the changes from one year to the next in terms of our contracts. We've got a list of the contracts. We presented this list to County Council as part of our financial review. It was very illuminating to them. They appreciated it very much. They felt like they'd been asking for it for a while. And now we get to present that same information in a second version in fiscal '26 and to illuminate the differences between one year and the next. Those differences largely have to do with inflationary factors that are programmed into contracts, changes in McKinney-Vento services that we're providing and special education services. I want to illuminate a couple of those changes and share what those means for our viewing audience who don't know what McKinney-Vento is. McKinney-Vento is the provision, it's actually an act by Congress and the federal government that provides protections and supports for our unhoused students, either temporarily or permanently. And a lot of this budget goes to some social supports, but primarily it goes to transportation. We have seen an increase in our unhoused student population, and as a consequence of this housing insecurity, it calls upon us to provide a higher level of care and a higher level of service. It's not a surprise. We kind of saw this one coming. This is not a shock to us. It is a scary artifact of the times that we're in today and the world that we're living in today, but it presses on us to double down on our values of supporting kids all the more. Our special education services is one. Something that this board has spent an awful lot of time talking about are speech services and how we might provide the best version of speech services. There's definitely a tenor that we could improve even our contracted speech services to be more in-person and more connected to the student experience because speech services are certainly at a premium, and there's definitely a labor market shortage. So making sure that we can address that in a meaningful way should we not be able to fully fill our vacancies is something that's important. And I'll leave it to the experts to take it from here and to also address anything else they want to illuminate in the contract space.
Thank you. So as we've said, we'll move quickly through the follow-up section. There's a lot of follow-up, and we certainly want to just highlight what it is so that we can come back and have more questions and discussion from the board. So the first piece of follow-up that we're showing here, and this is to begin, we're going to start by going through the follow-up from the January 14th work session that was not addressed last time. This is the chart, Ms. Silvestri, that does show all of the fixed charges with the complete breakdown of what our current base cost is, the FY '26 total, and then the change. And so that chart is here for your reference. And again, we will post this with our updated information for the public as well. Following on with January 14th follow-up, we were requested to look into the cost to lower class size by one student in grades K-2. And we want to just reiterate that in this approach, this is taking an average guideline approach. This is, again, what an estimate would be of reducing the guidelines by one student per class, per grade, per school in grades K-2. We estimate that that would require adding 74 teachers at about $6.6 million. There was a question regarding the temporary part-time funding for transportation. The transportation substitute estimate, I'm sorry, is about 10% daily, keeping in mind how many bus drivers we have and bus attendants. That's a very, very large number of people, and that is approximately the rate that they estimate for. This funding, again, catches us up to what we budget for that. I'm sorry, what we spend for that, our budget will catch up to that. The question regarding what is currently budgeted in FY '25 for restorative justice? We have $1.8 million in salaries, benefits, stipends, and materials. That is in addition to the school-based coach stipends and the additional central office Projected cost of one additional restorative justice coach at each high school to add 17 additional restorative justice positions in addition to that current nine would require $2.8 million additional to the budget. There was a question regarding the process for how and when we allocate educators for subsequent increases and how we work our way through changes in enrollment in the year. I'm going to highlight this really briefly, and I think if the board wants to come back to questions, we can discuss this more. But principals will receive their staffing allocations for the upcoming school year on March 6th. The actual enrollment is reviewed weekly. And so through the spring process, staff meetings do occur on a very regular basis and a very frequent basis to review enrollment, review those changes, determine if adjustments are needed, and then make those adjustments and recommendations throughout the spring. So it is an ongoing and evolving process throughout that timeframe. The next question we had regarded AP and IB exams. You see the data here. I won't read all the way through it, but it does show the number of students enrolled, exams administered, and exams with three grader or four grader for AP and IB. You also see here the intervention materials and costs of what we purchase for elementary schools. Again, those resources are here, and this information will all be posted online for the public as well. I had a question regarding how many counselors and media specialists are national boards certified, and we have 15 counselors and seven media specialists at this time. We have a number of follow-up items regarding the student data concerns that were presented at the testimony. And I'm sorry, I should have noted, we've moved on to the follow-ups from the January 16th public hearing. The information here outlines our data protection policies and our current efforts and practices to ensure that data is retained appropriately but also removed when it's not necessary for us to keep it any longer. And finally, from January 16th, we had a question regarding Monocacy Elementary School, which does have a full-time staff development teacher, and where we are in updating the school counselor job description, that is still in process. OHR and the Elementary School Counselors Work Group will continue to work that through.
So we now have the follow-ups for the January 23rd work session, and there was a question around information for home and hospital instruction and virtual instruction. As you can see in home and hospital, which is mandated, we spent about $2.5 million. And the virtual instruction between the high school virtual instruction and blended learning is about $2.4 million. As you can see, online pathways to graduations and e-learning courses are the ones with the highest enrollment and attendance, and then blended learning and central hybrid math, you know, have smaller attendance. But those are brand-new programs, in a way. The contractual amount that we spend on that is about $195,000, and it's for the licenses to support those programs. There was also a question around the CREA food options. And regrettably, CREA is not a program that is allowable under the USD School Lunch Program. But they do receive the bag lunches that are created for that population or students, you know, that attend CREA. And there's also, Mana Food Center provides a hot meal on Thursdays for them at this time. Another question was regarding the single administrators. And we only currently, we only have two schools with single administrators. One is Monocacy Elementary School, and one is North Cheviche Elementary Schools. And there's no regional programs or system-wide programs in those two schools. Those are our smaller schools at this time. A couple of years ago, when we got the SR funding, we started the permanent substitute pilot program. I believe this is the third year that we have it. And the cost is approximately $3.1 million. And we have about 85 subs in 90 schools because some of them rotate between two schools. There was a question regarding the home policy for Chromebooks. And that policy has not changed since August of 2022. But now there are some schools that have the card distribution model. And those students, those schools that have the card distribution model are eligible to take a Chromebook home. And, but we're not 100% right now, one-to-one access to Chromebooks, you know, based on, you know, the conversation we had at the last work session and the information provided by Dr. Taylor. Amounts spent on Chromebook repairs in this year, we are projecting, it's a projection of $3.6 million. And that is to replace the LCD screens, the cameras on the Chromebooks. Those are the biggest expenses to date. Not the only ones, but the biggest ones. Revenue collected for lost and damaged Chromebooks. This is not something that we have applied consistently, you know, since the pandemic because we were trying to make sure that we're able to provide the Chromebooks for all the students. But since 2020, we've collected around $154,000. And then this year is about $60,000 to date. So it's a small amount compared to the cost of replacing Chromebooks or fixing Chromebooks. So we are, there was a lot of discussion around the twice-exceptional program for students. And this is, there were questions around why the program has decreased in enrollment. And the factors for that include, you know, the distance from the homeschool to the schools that offer the twice-exceptional program, expansions in homeschools of other programs that are able to provide the supports to those students or the instruction to those students. And as you can see on the slide, there's some misunderstanding of, you know, the profile of the students in regards to social, emotional, behavioral, and academic needs. So there's going to be increased professional development for special education students to be able to provide support for those students. As of the January 27th public hearings, there were a few questions. And one of them was about the no-work-no-pay day for certain employees. The 16 no-work-no-pay students for 10 months here, I just want to clarify that some of those days include the system-wide closures during winter break and the system-wide closures during spring break. So overall, during the school year, outside of those, it's about four to five no-work-no-pay days. And the cost is about $2.3 million per day. If you remember, this was something that we tried to add to the budget a couple of years ago. And eventually, we were not able to include it. Bus tracking options, you know, they're still researching those. There is an RFP that was published, you know, for people to respond. So they're still working through those solutions. And are there plans to replace a ramping Gathersboro Cluster on CIP list? There is the Latinsville Elementary School that has requested ADA ramps on all the exterior doors. So they're working, the construction and facilities team is working to assess those conditions and identify possible solutions. And then I think this is our second to last. What are the translation headphones budgeted? So as you can see, we currently only have one transmitter and 25 receivers, you know, that the language assistance services unit utilizes. And there are extreme costs associated with this as, you know, they're approximately $1,200 per language. We don't have in-house scripted interpretation. Those are contractual services that they use TPT individuals for support through the language assistance services unit. And I think that was the last one.
Okay. So what to expect from here and where we go from here? We are seeking the board's direction today. In addition to lingering questions, comments, and things that you need in terms to inform your decision, I think we're going to make progress on that contracts information before close today and make sure that that's up so that you have that. Some things that you will see changed in the budget documents that get presented between now and February 4 is that we will update based on the governor's proposed budget and make the changes on the revenue side and also make the changes on the expenditure side, which won't change our local request. So right now, we turn it over to the board for discussion and also direction from the board as to what you would like your staff to do next.
Dr. Taylor, thank you so much. There's a lot of follow-up to the previous two work sessions. Questions, all comments raised by board members. I really appreciate that you provide these timely answers to the board. And I'm wondering whether my fellow board member has more clarification on those questions or comments on the follow-up informations. And I'm going to go from my right-hand side to see anyone still have lingering questions.
I just want to say thank you for saying that, Ms. Yang, because the budget staff has requested a good night's sleep this weekend. And they've been working incredibly hard. And we know how important it is to communicate with the public the questions that you're receiving and that they're receiving too. So we want to get as much information out there as quickly as possible. So thank you for saying that.
We truly appreciate it. We see a very great improvement in this process. Ms. Wolf?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for hearing my question and providing a response. Of course, it's still a little bit hard to see for the public, I'm sure. But I do see black students in this budget. I'm also glad that you talked about the code of conduct because we discussed that. And I really, I know that we review it at the end of every school year for the next school year. And I really want us to take a look at the subjective categories and see if we can tighten those up so that there's not so much subjectivity in them. I also want us to do something that you mentioned, which was drill down more on the specific schools and see if we can identify the schools that need more support in order to bring up the achievement levels of black students. I just wanted to say thank you because I know this has been a lot of work. And I really appreciate your taking into consideration my request.
Ms. Stewart?
Are we going to have rounds?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for clarifying. Let's go for one question first.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the incredible amount of work. I mean, just flipping through these slides, it really shows. And it really helps us have a clearer picture of the needs of our school system as well. So my question on this round is about the restorative justice piece. So there was some concern that maybe there was a cut to some central office restorative justice positions. And I just thought we could get some clarity on that.
Definitely not a cut. Definitely a reimagination of how we might deploy those folks and how we might utilize them on cross-functional teams differently. That does, because we do have some changes in job descriptions, it does necessitate us to go through some human resources hoops. But definitely not a cut. If anything, a refocusing and a greater intentionality on how we might attach this as a priority. Because we heard that loud and clear, too. We shared the concern. And we see great opportunity for us to address this in a really more intentional way.
And that paired with the code of conduct work, I think, would put us on a better path to implementing restorative justice with more fidelity and more consistency throughout the system. And also, the fish. I'm hoping that we could teach our employees or in the school every day on how to actually implement that vision. So I really appreciate that. And I'll have more questions later. Thank you.
Ms. Montoya?
Thank you. I want to just echo the thoughts of my colleagues. Thank you all so much. I know it takes so many people who are in this room and not in this room to get all of this information, including the very quick answers that you got for all of our follow-ups. I know these are little tidbits of information that live in various spaces, so I appreciate that. I would like to just respectfully remind all of us that when we make presentations or we put things in writing, we need to capitalize the B in black. So that's just something I would like folks to note for the slide presentation. But my question actually is for this round. It has to do with the two schools that don't have assistant principals. There is not space in the proposed budget for assistant principals for those schools, right? Because the number of students enrolled is so low.
Correct.
Great. And I don't have a gripe with that. What I would just like to suggest is, should there ever be a situation where we consider that, that perhaps MCPs should reach out to the principals and staffs at those schools because sometimes when schools are smaller like that, they might do things in a different way. They have folks that are filling in those spaces, and we wouldn't want to disrupt that either.
So I'm actually really glad that you brought that up because it really details bigger work that needs to happen on a couple of fronts. Something that the board heard an awful lot about of this budget season was about class size and how we might address class size in a deliberate way. This is very much connected to staffing for administrators, staffing for teachers, staffing for all of our staff positions that are school-facing, is what ratios do we use to staff buildings? And what are the conditions that we create in order to staff our buildings at a set ratio? So something that we hope to bring in the next year back before the board for consideration are staffing ratios for school-facing positions in terms of how we would staff the buildings moving forward and shifting away from something that's a little loosey-goosey with guidelines. So it wouldn't be a discreet question about, does this school get this or does that school get this? But rather, there would be some concrete rules to follow in terms of how we would staff a building. So thank you for illuminating that.
I'm going to come to the side. Ms. Tersavanna?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you all for this presentation. I feel like it went really into detail about a lot of the questions that we had. I appreciate the very succinct answers to some of like our, off the top of our head questions. And I think it answered a lot of questions for me. I also want to say thank you for the Swedish fish. I finished my pack. But alongside that, I just wanted to sort of, kind of go back to the idea of like the reorganization, reculturing, and kind of get like, sort of an insight into maybe saying, well, some people are scared right now about their jobs and about all of these things. But what does it mean like in the future for, you know, how we want to keep our retention rates and keep great people within our system? And just kind of maybe talking about that because I know people see their job cut. And you're talking about the HR loops that we have to follow.
Yeah, and change is difficult. It's very easy to get excited about change until change shows up on your front doorstep. And so I think the disposition that we need to have is to be clear about the goals and objectives that we want to accomplish and providing answers, support, and guidance to people who may see that either their role is changing or that there's different expectations tied to their role or that their role isn't in this building, but that there are options. And that's on us. It doesn't happen overnight because we do have so many people. And there's a lot of people to communicate with. I know that it's been custom to release organization charts with the budget release in December. We held off on that intentionally. And the reason that we held off on that intentionally is we wanted to be very sure about the steps that we were taking, making sure that we were consulting with the leadership of every single department before making a decision, making certain that there wasn't a critical task that was going to go unperformed by making an adjustment, and talking through how some of the work could be rearranged without it having a direct impact to services or overloading somebody's plate in a really inconvenient and disruptive way. The reason we didn't release org charts, and we'll be releasing org charts, I think, today? Tomorrow?
First thing tomorrow.
First thing tomorrow? Is because we know that we owe our employees a face-to-face communication. And even though there's uncertainty and people are nervous, that's natural. It's uncomfortable. It doesn't feel good. But we have an obligation to the system to make sure that we are being a good fiduciary, responsible governance team on how we operate the district efficiently. But we also have a paired responsibility to be kind, compassionate, and empathetic with our teammates so that they know how valuable they are and that there is a place for them in the organization. And we just need to work together to find it.
Yeah, so I just kind of want to echo that last sentiment. Like, there are places for these people within our system. Kind of going back to the slides, to one of the slides where it talks about the target hiring placements. Like, we have a process, so yeah, thank you.
Ms. Rivera?
I'm going to let.
Okay, because I saw you turn. Okay, Mrs. Imbomman?
Thank you. I want to also echo sentiments and thank everyone for all of this hard work that's been done in getting information back to us as quickly as possible. Thank you very much. I also want to echo what Ms. Stewart, Mr. Savanna, have brought up. It's showing up in all of our inboxes. And when we're out in the community, there's a lot of uncertainty. And I'm hopeful that with the release of the org chart that that will help some of these rumors of, oh, my gosh, X position has been cut, that it's really just been reorganized. And I'm not trying to put more work on anyone's plate at the very last minute. But if there's a way that we can make sure that that's really clear, that, you know, this position is really just being renamed or that it's getting some new responsibilities or some responsibilities are taken away, I think that would ease a lot of this public discomfort.
Yeah, and thank you for saying that. We know that there is going to be a lot of nervousness. I will say that we intentionally tried to speed up as much as we could and be six weeks ahead so that people could have this settled for them. It's never going to be perfect with nice, neat, tidy job descriptions, everything all lined up because we've accelerated our timeline so quickly. But we need to work through that. We need to stay in close contact with folks that are impacted. We do know who's impacted. And it's not a reflection of a lack of love or a lack of support or a lack of wanting to continue our working relationship. So it's a difficult process, but it is a part of a process. And so thank you for recognizing that. And we will honor that as well.
Ms. Sylvester?
Thank you. I had a question or a comment about the reculturing of central services. You identify metrics for success, which is wonderful. Reduced wait times, fewer layers, and differentiation between responses, AKA improved customer service. So two thoughts. It's really important that we get feedback from principals in terms of how this support is actually helping them. We think we're doing a good job, but what does the principal think? And, or the leadership team? And then also, you know, is it having an impact on academic achievement? It can be a lot of activity, a lot of people coming down on schools, but is it actually making a difference? So I'd like to see those integrated into your metrics for success.
Thank you. We are great at evidence of implementation. We are terrible at evidence of impact. So this is a great opportunity for us to showcase that.
And I'll have more questions. I'll wait.
Ms. Rivera?
No, thank you for the follow-up information. And one of the things that I know we cannot put in the budget, but to start thinking with some of the follow-up information that occurs to me is, especially with our home hospital students. And it's just a students, and it's just the whole breakdown of our population. Like, how many kids are farms? How many kids are SEL? How many kids are EML? And what do those services look like for our students, on our medical fragile students that I don't see represented here? But just, we talked about, you talked about the speech therapist and the lack of speech therapists and such a commodity, but it's not a commodity for most medical fragile students. It's a need that it needs to be filled in, just thinking ahead how we're going to do that, whether we're going to do it in-house or so on. And then, when you did the follow-up for the, give me a second. For the two-tiered, the 2E program, again, I would love to know how many students that we're talking about. Has, you said that population has decreased, but then you said it might not be because of need, it might be because of transportation issues and so on. So what are we doing for those students and the breakdown as well, geographically, demographic, and so on? And then one thing that caught my eye is the whole interpretation services. So I just want to, so for the whole system, we have one transmitter, like for the whole MCPS system?
How much are you cost?
Right, and we contract that, but I didn't get a full picture of, and again, this is probably for next year, but if we have one transmitter and 25, right? And I'm just trying to understand, that's what we have in-house? And the cost, what it is the cost yearly that we are expending on contracting out for this whole department? And just to do an evaluation, does it behoove us to grow that in-house versus contracting out? Is that a way that, maybe next year, we can look at how we can do that? You know, we are one of the most diverse systems in the country, and we know our largest growth of students are EML students, right? So can we do an evaluation of that department to see if it does, if it's worth doing it in-house versus contracting out? And I don't know how much that is a year, but I appreciate the work. And I know that you have, in some of the asks that you have...
Ms. Rivera-Orban, we'll go for another round.
No, I just wanted to know that the relationship between line 67 with how that would affect the 2E situation and other groups with our Black students and special ed and Latino students and so on, how would that correlate to be able to connect those two points as you see it?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for talking about your restructuring and reculturing MCPS. I know that a number of positions have new descriptions, job descriptions. So one of the things I would always say that our onboarding and professional development that need to be relooked at because these are new positions now. So I'm sure that's on your horizon, but I think that's one important thing to think about during this implementation process. Another thing to consider is there have been quite a lot of changes in our school systems. So there's some historic knowledge or institutional knowledge that during this process, it's worth for us to remember or value so that when things transition, that we don't need to start everything from the scratch, that best practices from before, lessons learned from before can continue. Okay? My clarification is, can you tell me for the permanent substitute position? That started with COVID, during COVID, with federal subsidies. Do we still continue with the practice? And are we funding that from our base budget?
So yes, thank you for the question. It did start during the pandemic, a year after we came back in person, and it was funded through ESER. We moved it into the operating budget last year. It has been, it was decreased from what it was funded from ESER. At one point, we had over 140 permanent substitutes, and now we are at, I believe it was around 85.
Okay.
But it has decreased because, as you can tell, it is, you know, it is an expense. But I know that Dr. Taylor is something that he wants to increase or expand in the future. So it's something that we will consider in the future budget years.
Thank you, thank you. We heard good feedback about that program, but I understand it increased our base budget amounts. I'm going to go for the second round. I'm going to look to my left first to see if there are any light on. Ms. Sylvester?
Yes, thank you for the follow-up around class size reduction in K to 2 totaling 6.6 million. I just want to remind the viewing audience that elementary schools at that level already have reduced class sizes in certain schools. And so if you're trying to extrapolate, as I was, into secondary, that's going to be an under count, I guess, of the actual cost. And I also wanted you to talk about the work that you will be doing, Dr. Taylor, this year to look at staffing so that hopefully next year, we can make an informed decision about class size reduction in our budget.
Absolutely critical, and I'm really glad that you pointed it out because it's arguably one of the more confusing things for people to understand, that when we deal with large numbers of student population, it is not literally removing one student from a classroom and placing them into another classroom, that it really is taking a look at the total grade level population, subject area population, or secondary school population, and changing a ratio, which may or may not influence the need for additional staff or an additional classroom based on the size of that particular grade or that particular classroom. And those guidelines have certainly served the district well and been very helpful and create a lot of flexibility. Unfortunately, it does allow for there to be a little bit of class size creep over time when you've got a set amount of classrooms in a set area for a set specific space. What will end up happening typically is that one campus or another that's experiencing a population boom or a population bubble, that their ability to adjust is really limited. So our work really needs to be working with our parent associations and our different community groups, as well as our associations for our administrators, our support staff, and our educators, to talk about what optimal class sizes really should be, setting those ratios with some rules about when we round up, when we round down, what triggers an additional section of a class, what timelines we follow in terms of measuring our student enrollment, because our enrollment does change throughout the year. Currently, right now, we measure typically in the fall and in the spring, and we use those numbers for different measurements, but there's a compelling reason that we get a lot of students in January. And so as a result of that, we need to take those things into consideration. So our work and what our end product is that we hope to bring back to the board is not just a revision of our guidelines and how we might reduce class size, but what a target might be for us over the next several years, and then also a subsequent plan on how we could get to that target year-over-year for the next several years. Because to make an impact, a meaningful impact at the secondary level requires not only for us to change a ratio, but for also us to set guidelines on how a principal might arrange their master schedule. So that there are some safeguards in place so that an English 9 class doesn't have 35 kids in it and some other class have 12 kids in it, and to set some of those boundaries and to provide that guidance in a really meaningful way.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We heard from our testimony that this is important to our families, and I'm a parent too, so I have witnessed it firsthand with my children. I hope that in your analysis, we also take a look at our class size reduction initiative. We've had that for decades. Is it working for us? I know that large class sizes make it very difficult for the teacher to manage classroom management. Just the socialization of having that many students in the classroom is difficult. But it's my understanding that to really see academic achievement impact, it has to be very, very low in the 14 level, which is difficult, if not impossible, for public school systems, tax supporters, public school systems to achieve. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, the academic achievement, what's going to take it to be meaningful, but also recognizing that it does become very difficult for our teachers to manage large class sizes. And just, we are being responsive to the community feedback, but it's not something that you can just flip a switch. We want to be thoughtful and make a good recommendation in next year's budget. Thank you.
Mr. Savanna?
Yeah, kind of piggybacking off that idea of the class size reduction, I think it's also important to note that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the redistricting will also affect secondary class sizes in some way, shape, or form, correct?
It's actually, as painful as a boundary study can be, it's actually a tremendous opportunity that if you're going to make a substantive change to the guidelines or the standards in which you staff the building, that in and of itself, it won't make, just the boundary change won't impact class sizes. But what would make a change is that if you're balancing the number of students in a school coupled with a new set of expectations for staffing, you'll likely see a pretty dramatic shift because you have an opportunity to create parity amongst campuses that you normally otherwise wouldn't have.
So it's more like a multiplier rather than like a...
Yeah, that's one way of looking.
Thank you.
Mrs. Inverman?
Thank you. I figured if we're on the topic, I thought I'd join on in too. So the guideline info is really helpful, and we discussed this earlier at our fiscal management meeting earlier in the week. I just want to highlight two parts of it that I think are really important, that there's not like an end date to the request. I think there's perception or rumor that there is an end date, but that if your class sizes are over the recommended ratio, you can reach out and say, we are at or over capacity, please help us at any point in the year. And also that these requests go through the principal and they're elevated further up. So I just encourage anyone in the community, any staff members, work with administrators to bring that up, and that if your child's class size or your own class size is at or above, then that's something you can collaborate on, work on together, that this is something that everyone wants to help address.
Thank you. I'm going to this side. Ms. Stewart?
Well, I, since I still have more questions, but the one, I think, to piggyback off of the class size question, because it is something that we heard a lot in message from the public. Please reduce class size. We've heard it probably a dozen times. So knowing that we need to go about this strategically, seeing the costs for only K through 2, and it's not really the full approach we probably even need, because like you said, there's creep. For one thing, I would like to see that creep not happen next year. So if I could get some kind of assurance that we're not going to let that creep even more. And the second part is really what parents care about mostly is what improvements in this budget are they going to see in the classroom? So when they talk about class size, it's really because they see that their kid, they're not getting the support they need, and they see that teachers are overwhelmed. We have, we do have new positions that we're adding to our system under the special education, parent educators, and it's significant, if we vote on that, it would be a significant addition in staff. So can you maybe let our, let the community know, what will they see in the classroom so that their kid will get more attention because of this budget?
Yeah, and it's a good question. And the challenge that we've got in this room is that we really are dealing in the aggregate and the 30,000-foot view versus what is one elementary school parent's experience with their child and their teacher in their classroom? And the reality is that the budget may not have this immediate, direct, or dramatic effect other than a couple of things that are meaningful. Making an investment in our staff is critically important because the teacher that the third grader hopes they get for fourth grade, we want to make sure that she's there next year and that she's incentivized to be there. And so that when she, when her daughter shows up to fourth grade, that she walks into the classroom and she's so excited to see Mrs. whoever in room 235 because that was the teacher she always wanted to have. Making sure that we retain our great staff is critically, critically important. So a big investment in retention matters. A lot of this is tangential, as I mentioned earlier. A big investment in special education is not just in special education. It's also an investment in our general ed space because of other resources that get diverted when we're understaffed in special education or we're understaffed in EML, that educators have partners to collaborate on when they're working with an EML student, that they have the resources that they need to do that, that there are materials and supplies for that classroom that the teacher doesn't have to go into their pocket to cover the cost because we ran out of copy paper in March, which routinely happens, unfortunately. So making sure that we can cover some of those basics really lays the foundation for people to see a tangible difference. I think any strategy that we put into play, and this is important as a discussion point for our community, is going to be iterative. And so we're going to see evolution over time. The responsibility that we have is to paint a clear picture through our strategic plan and through the work that we want to do over the next several years about what we expect that great classroom to look like. This is what it should look like. This is how many students should be in that classroom. These are the supports that should be available to that classroom, and here's our plan over the next several years to get there. That's within reach, and that's really what we need to be doing. The sad reality about the budget that I've presented to you is largely about stabilizing the district and taking some really not awesome situations and really putting them on the path to solvency, making sure we live up to the commitments that we've already made. And if there's a theme to this budget, it is one of transparency where we're reflecting the things that are our reality, whether it's Chromebook repairs, or whether it's our health benefits fund, or whether it's our electric bill, making sure that there's a clear and transparent way for how we account for our resources. And no, it doesn't leave a ton of room for innovation or enhancement, but our strategies are sound. They are the approach that we think will get us from point A to point B. But future budgets really do need to be a reflection of the board's strategic plan moving forward. Those two things need to be synonymous, they need to be aligned, and they need to reflect the values of the school system.
So thank you so much for your answer. I just wrote three points down about what parents could see in their classroom with this budget versus the last, and that is more stability in their schools, more capital, human capital, resources to support the kids in the school, and also more materials and supplies to support the educational program. So thank you so much, because it's really important that we have some tangible items so they know that we're going in the right direction and that there will be more in-classroom support. Thank you.
Ms. Montoya?
Thank you. I'd like to talk about CREA. I have to be honest, I'm embarrassed that this is the food that we've been providing. I understand the restraints, right? As you mentioned, it doesn't qualify under the USDA School Lunch Program, which I would love to know why, but we can talk about that later. And we've been trying to source from outside. I'm very grateful to Manah for the support that they provided. We had some students come who were not part of the CREA program but testified on behalf of the participants about some of our... of the participants about some of our, our community restaurants and other providers helping out, so I want to thank our community members. And I want to know what we're going to do about it. We see here that we're expanding. CREA has been limited with the resources that they had. Again, I'm embarrassed, we're serving Uncrustables to basically adults who have been working all day long, for those in the community who may not have a young child in their life. An Uncrustable is about the size of my palm, not my fingers, just the palm. So I want to know with this expansion, which I think is fantastic, I think that's going to be great for our students and our communities, I'm very excited about it, actually, where is the food?
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
I just have two follow-ups. One is, I mentioned earlier that while you mentioned some things for Black students, there were other things that the community could not see. And one of them, Mr. Savannah mentioned, and that's program evaluation, I think it was you that mentioned, that's going to be very important to our students because we have issues, particularly in East County, of access and opportunity. So this has been something we've been trying to get done for some time, so very appreciative to see that in the budget. But I do have a question about, oh, what is it, the equity add-on. I think that this can't be a free-for-all, that we need to require some kind of plan be submitted of what they're going to do with that money. And that's all I had to say about it. Thank you.
All right. I appreciate that, providing information on intervention material cost at an elementary school level. At a glance, I can see that math is very clear, our curriculum, and then one intervention that we purchased. It's not so clear with reading. There are curriculum come with intervention and then several, four other interventions we purchase. I would like to see some utilization data. They might be all for purpose, for different needs, but it's perplexing, it's confusing. For math, we also have different needs, too. Why reading is a different kind of intervention? I would like to see school system, it doesn't need to be a larger cell, some utilization data and some impact data, right, that these intervention can bring about. I would appreciate that. Then my question will be about Chromebook repairs. What is demonstrated here for FY25? It is a majority of the money actually is going to replace the screens, and this is the already we spend on it. This LCD screen is the Chromebook screen and the Chromebook. So this is what we spent, and we are projecting, and we didn't have a line item in 25 for this cost?
Yes, we've had a line item for a while, for about three or four years of 1.5 million. That was not sufficient, so we always augmented with the ESAR funding in the last couple of years, because as you know, the Chromebook inventory increased as a result of the pandemic. If you remember a couple of years ago, in order to try to balance the budget, that 1.5 million dollars was eliminated from the base budget moved to ESAR, and now we've brought it back with an increase. But again, 3.6 million is what we are projecting to spend through the end of this year, and then we're budgeting for inflation costs and so on for next year.
And which is a $4 million budget.
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. All right, I'm going to go one last round to see if there's any more questions. I'm going to start from this side, Ms. Stewart.
Okay, it's hard to pick the last, but I have to ask this because I believe at this moment in time, especially what is happening at the national level and what could happen from decisions made there, that we need all hands on deck, okay? And that's our full community, our teachers, our kids, everyone on deck to move us forward. So with that, and after hearing about the comments about the CREA program and the food issue there, we have a program called Dine With Dignity. And it is used mainly, I believe, to pay off lunch debt, but I would like to see also CREA. If we cannot find, you know, the budget, we should, I know there are community members that would love to sponsor that program, and we do still have some deep pockets in Montgomery County that we can reach out to. So Dine With Dignity, this is an obvious opportunity. So let's, all of us think about the ways we can work with our community. Thanks.
Checking, Ms. Rivera?
Yeah, just to tag it on, on CREA, I just, I just want us to be, I'm very, although I'm very grateful for the add-on, I just want to just be clear that this were years of neglect and inequity that was towards the students in CREA. This did not happen overnight, and we did treat them as second-class citizens for years. And with our EMO population, it has the lowest graduation rate than any other group, 28%. So I just want to make sure that the focus still on lifting, following the comments of, you know, the food situation, that should have honestly been taken care of years ago. I don't think it should take this, you know, additional funding, right? Leadership knew, the people, you know, who are under the leadership of CREA knew, and if they didn't, well, shame on them for not knowing, for not visiting, for not understanding this group of students in our system. And that's still concerning to me. So I just want to make sure that although we are going to open to other students and so on and do the CREA plus, that it is with the lens of equity, of the inequities that had gone on for years towards this program. So I just want to make sure that that focus is still there, because if this, again, this group of students and EMO students, I feel are still not very well represented on this budget, and yet they have the lowest graduation rate ever than any other group and has been for years.
Ms. Sivesteri?
Back to Chromebooks, could you help me understand which schools have a cart distribution model?
I don't have that data, but we can get it, you know, and share it with the, with the board.
It's not going to influence my decision on the next board meeting, I'm just curious.
Sure.
And could you remind us, you mentioned that you will be putting up the org charts in a day or two. Can you all, remind us what else is coming up? I know the dashboard still needs, has FY25 budget on there. What else is being updated in the coming days?
So, yes, so we will be updating the, all the org charts, including chapter one, will be uploaded for first thing tomorrow morning for everyone to see. We will finalize and the contracts, the list of contracts, and that will be put on board docs. There are table five that we didn't provide in the superintendent's budget because we were still making adjustments and had to notify, you know, staff members, so that's the one that lists all the positions. So that will be uploaded as well tomorrow morning. And I think that is the complete list, obviously. But that would be for the February 4th, right? So, you know, that would be once the board adopts their budget, we will have that for, for that information.
And the dashboard?
The dashboard, yes. The dashboard is, we're working through, it's a little bit more complicated, to be honest, only because we have made changes in the budget, again, a restructure, so everything is not lining up, you know, departments have changed names, everything is not lighting up, you know, aligning with the FY24 budget. So we just want to make sure that we're able to have a clear crosswalk between the FY24 budget and the FY25 budget. So we're working on that, but we hope to have it finalized, you know, within the next few days.
But that's supposed to show the 25 budget or the 26 proposed budget?
I'm sorry, it was the 25 budget and the 26 proposed budget. You're correct. Sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I think you're moving on the timeline. I think the slide shows that you will update everything February 4th, and I can see you do need a good night's sleep. You're moving up all the timeline. Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you. So I also want to bring it back to Chromebooks, because I can imagine that someone sitting at home would say, well, you've collected a close to $60,000, but you're projected to spend millions. What's going on? Why are we, like, are we letting the kids snap the Chromebooks over their knees and just give them a new one? Like, can we explain and extrapolate a little bit more on policy and collection?
Sure. So there's that Chromebook regulation that was established that indicates that we are only collecting funding from students really if they're intentionally cost damaged to the Chromebook. So, you know, it has to be, there has to be some investigations at the school level to determine whether it was intentional, it was just, you know, used, you know, of a Chromebook, the regular use. So that is what's the differences between the actual impact to the cost of repairing versus what is collected from students.
Perfect, thank you. Am I able to ask another? Okay. The other question, I guess it's probably more of a request, but when we look at our intervention materials at elementary schools, I'd love to see which ones are gaining great success and which ones maybe are not as successful, that if we want to keep using those interventions.
Thank you. Thank you so much, board members, for your comments and questions and the few follow-up items and the affirmative feedback, it's been really helpful. Madam President, at this time, we would request that the board-
Oh, there's one more comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We have some more to go on. Okay, Mr. Savannah?
Yes, no worries. Again, kind of going back to the idea of Chromebooks, I feel a lot more comfortable with, you know, the number that we're putting in the budget. If, you know, I know there's like a lot of e-waste generated sometimes when we're looking at some of those Chromebook repairs. We have a lot of great, you know, tech clubs across our schools, so maybe just looking into practices to kind of see what on those clubs might need and if we can provide anything from those Chromebooks. I know a lot of them are very resourceful, going into a lot of e-waste shops and getting whatever scraps they can, so I think it'd be great if we can just, you know, make sure that we have a process in place on that side, but just making sure our money's going as far as it can be.
And if I may, I do know that the Chromebook repair team reuses parts, you know, from other Chromebooks, you know, to make those repairs. So that is part of their strategy.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Taylor, I think I have a question for our board member. You have a proposed budget, but the board members might have thoughts on the budget, so thank you for putting it together. But given the restraints the school system faces in MCPS, I'm going to turn to my colleagues to find out if there are any items, all places in the budget, where we believe there are additional items that we can see some savings from this operating budget. I would like to turn to my colleagues, if you have, turn your light on and we'll go on. Ms. Wolf?
Okay, first, I would like to say that I do believe in asking for what we need, and I think this is a bare-bones budget, and that we did ask for what we needed. And so I do agree with it, however, anything can be tweaked a little. And so as we looked at the budget, we looked at some of the items, and I know the public out there likes to think we do nothing but rubber stamp. I used to think that before I got on the board, too. And then you learn the real situation. But one of the things that I do think we could eliminate off the budget is the proposal for renaming McGruder High School. Now, it doesn't sound like a lot, and it isn't, and I quite frankly wouldn't argue over it because I know how sensitive this issue has been to the community. You know, the naming of a school carries out into the community, the feeling about the school. However, at this point in time, even though it's only a million dollars, I think we have to stay focused on our North Star, which is achievement, literacy, and reading. And that million dollars could fund something we need more importantly right now at this time than the renaming of McGruder High School.
I'd actually like to second Ms. Wolf's suggestion. I do want to thank the community for engaging, whether it's at these budget work sessions over the years when we're talking about the names and mascots of schools. I know we had one at Polesville High School many, many years ago, and I am very sensitive, actually, to this issue. But I do think, given that we have, you know, we have to make sure that we are asking only for what is truly, truly needed, and given that some of the, there will be some capital improvements in McGruder, it seems like we might be duplicating efforts if we were to spend the community's money for renaming now as well as then later in the CIP budget. So I do want to say that this is important, but I know that we have to really focus on the most important things, and so I would just like to second Ms. Wolf's suggestion.
Ms. Stewart?
And I agree with my colleagues on that aspect of the budget. There are other ways that we can become an anti-racist system that has effect in the classroom. Again, I am really focused on the classroom experience in this budget, and so this aligns with that approach. And in addition, I think there's another place where we could, you know, think about our fiscal responsibility, and that is the social-emotional learning specialist. I do know that the Office of Shared Accountability does good work, and I'm confident that we can use existing staff to work on our social-emotional learning education for our students. Again, just being cognizant that we need to use our dollars in the best way possible and using our staff, and with the reorganization, I think our staff could take that on to make improvements. So-
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Savannah?
Yeah, I just kind of want to continue off here. I mean, as any student will tell you, like, the social-emotional learning of students is vitally important. With that being said, I did also have a mental health resolution that put up earlier to evaluate kind of exactly sort of what mental health resources we're doing. And again, looking at the work that the Office of Shared Accountability already does, maybe this is something that, you know, in collaboration with that, with that work group, we can certainly see some movement on, rather than just dedicating a full position in, you know, what is a broccoli budget.
I also, thank you, Mr. Savannah. I also have one item I would like us to take a closer look. We currently have half a million dollars dedicated to leadership development in central office. Given all the constraints we are experiencing, I want to see that if we can do, to do that with less. Now, I think professional development is important, leadership development is important, but is there a way we can decrease this line item and from half a million to 250,000? This is one area I think that we can leverage, community support, there are a lot of expertise out there, grant opportunities, and peer working together model to make us strong. So I would like to, as Dr. Taylor, in your budget presentation, say, we once were a bulge, a school system. I would like to see that, but I would like us to, given the constraint, take incremental steps towards that.
Thank you.
I just want to echo support for what Ms. Yang has brought up, and it's a really great way for us to do more with our community, create more with our community partners, and be more fiscally responsible.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Savannah?
Yeah, and again, like, kind of going back to the idea of McGruder, I feel like it's been said before, you know, what the impact of the renaming has and how much of that can be absorbed, like, by the CIP. Is there like a rough, like, percentage that maybe could be shared about how much of like that cost is, comes from just the straight, you know, material, like, shifts that need to happen?
Yeah, so thank you so much, and I want to thank the board for your very clear direction, very judicious and thoughtful selection of things that would generate a savings. I think your, your partners and the county council will certainly appreciate the efforts that you're making to reduce our ask, and I think you've selected wisely in terms of things that we can present back to you on February 4th, and we'll make sure that this is reflected. You do have a presentation on February 4th about the McGruder renaming, because this is actually something that has been-
that has been honored to do this for some time. And in that presentation, not to cut to the chase, maybe this will shorten it by five minutes, is that, is the option that you address this as a part of your CIP. And a large portion of the expense is tied to the CIP type of changes, things like signage in the school, the gym floor itself. Any time that you have something that does have some kind of connection, you are actually generating a savings because it has to be redone anyway. So that's a very astute observation and a great way to look at it. There are some soft costs that you could address in a future operating budget that corresponds with changes that you make to the CIP or even use CIP savings to fund some of those soft costs as well. So that's a great selection. Definitely, I think that if you are selecting positions that make sense versus the ones that don't, especially given the environment of how much change your superintendent is recommending as part of a restructuring, absolutely makes sense to make smaller steps and to be a lot more judicious and be very intentional and deliberate about those steps that are taken. And in terms of professional learning, absolutely. We'll rise to meet that challenge, and we'll definitely take an approach that is very deliberate as we begin our journey of reculturing central services to be more service-oriented. So thank you for those recommendations and direction to us.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera, all right?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Appreciate all the work of you and your staff, the endless hours over the weekend and of my colleagues here at the table as well. Though I, you know, we're not saying we're not going to be renaming McGruder High School. We're just saying that this time, with the changes that McGruder High School's going to be going through, right?
Just doing it smarter at a different time where it makes more financial sense.
Exactly. So I know that we all feel that this is something that's very important to the board, but the timing matters at this point. And with, you know, with staff development and so on, with the changes you're going to be making, I feel very strongly that you do need best practices and all that good stuff that, you know, have a small staff. We're not a small system, so all that, you know, it costs money to execute best practices and all that good stuff. So I appreciate that. The only, the only line that I'm not in agreement with my colleagues is the line 67, which is the equity and organization development assessment reporting. I just, I just want to say, I know that this is a line that we're thinking of savings. I personally don't think this is a line that we should, we should wait on. And with all the blue reporting requirements in that office, I just want to say that that is, those are positions that I fully support.
Ms. Stewart, do you have a clarification?
I do have a clarification. I wasn't suggesting to get rid of the whole line. I do agree, we need the assessment reporting specialist. And I would like to prioritize that position. It would be great if we could have both. But in this budget, I would choose the assessment reporting specialist and wait on a social-emotional learning specialist, maybe in a future budget, as we work through our Central Office reorganization. Or what was your word you liked to use? Not reorganization?
Reculture.
Restructuring. Thank you.
All right, we are learning a lot of new vocabulary. But Dr. Taylor, thank you for taking this into consideration. And we look forward to the budget that you will bring forward. Oh, Mr. Savanna, look at, board member has a lot to share. Yes, Mr. Savanna?
Yes, again, just wanted to echo those same sentiments. I think like the equity assessment specialist is vitally important. I think that the important part is that we understand that the social-emotional learning specialist is one that can be, can be looked at for a different time and the work can be shifted over through different categories.
I appreciate everyone. And I know that we can all agree that we are in our duties to oversee the school system, physical responsibility, and financial stewardship is a big part of our job. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. We look forward to see, to the February 4th meeting that you bring forward the budget, the proposed budget. Thank you so much. May I have, we don't need a motion, it's a work session. All right, meeting is adjourned.